Sorry for our delay.
No, you're good.
Yes, sorry. Jeremiah Greenberg.
Here.
Aaron Ballerson.
Here.
Tom Plannery.
Here.
Haley Levy.
Here.
Jason Morgan.
Here.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. So who?
Second.
Moving second to approve the agenda on favor. Aye. All closed. Motion carries. Kaylin Wilk and visitors. Thanks everybody for coming. Sorry, we've been a little bit of a late start here. Do you have blue cards? Do you have any blue cards? Okay, perfect, all right. So can we just start here with board of directors?
They're basically, I think you had. Yeah, I just want, yeah, we don't have any February or February. I just wanted one note. Earlier retirement applications were to be turned in Friday, and I did not receive any, so I just wanted to follow up, make sure you guys were aware of that.
Board members, if you might have your thing. Anybody?
Don't.
All right. All right, Danny, you're up.
I have no report tonight.
No, nothing.
We're going to watch time tonight.
All right. So let's move on to the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Second into approval, the consent agenda on favor.
Aye.
All closed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, dialogue actions. Dialogue and action items. Property and casualty. You want to lead that?
Yeah, I'll just open it up. So just as a reminder, I talked to you guys about this last board meeting. Seems like forever ago because we've met so many times since then, but property and casualty insurance is going to cover things like our liability, work comp, auto insurance, cyber insurance. So pretty much everything but our benefit, our employee health insurance. So just so you know, that's kind of where the topic is that we're discussing tonight. And so this, we have two presenters here, Holmes Murphy and Neighbor Insurance, and this conversation isn't about like carriers or coverage, but more about the service that can be provided to the district. So it's become increasingly aware that there's a lot of risk in liability out there, especially, I'm sure you've heard the recent cyber stuff going on with Des Moines, Cedar Rapids. Maybe it was other schools recently, but just the service that can be provided for the, for the district to help come alongside us and reduce that risk. Because Danny and I are no experts, although we wish we could be. So, I think we're workers. We're just all kinds of very important considerations that are probably at surface level for us to manage well. So just making sure we're having that right partner. So that is why we have these two companies here. I'll let you guys start, Neighbor Insurance. Do you have any, anything on the projector?
No, I've got some hands. I was looking on the projector.
Nothing on the projector? Okay, I'll just leave the board. I don't know if we hit the right one up there though.
You ready for me? Thank you, guys, for taking the time tonight. Give everybody one of these. Now, we are talking a little bit about the, I know you mentioned, we were really talking about the insurance company that we're happy with, but I do have stuff here that we're talking about EMC a little bit and why we're with them. All right, so first of all, thank you, guys, again. You know, I want to say a special thanks also. I know that the board, somebody on the board helped us out last week when they were voting on this to make sure that we got a chance to talk to you guys before we made a decision on this. We've been with the agent for you guys' account for 27 years. All those years with EMC. You know, just to start off with, you know, the common sense approach you guys have used as board of directors last few years has been noted in our community, and we just want to say thank you for doing that. The masking, the COVID, the sexual identity stuff. You know, obviously, we've noticed that, and the other school district around here, we've noticed that as well. So we want to say thanks for that. Just a real quick history lesson here. EMC Insurance started this program back in 1974. And I'll just give you some details about it, but an insurance agent named Bob Jester was having trouble securing insurance for his local school district. So he called some other agents in neighboring towns to try to figure out how to get coverages, and they were having the same problems. So they created this program specifically through EMC, which is an Iowa company, and they got together and they decided programs that they could offer, okay? And what they thought would the best way would be is using EMC, but having local agents in their community services accounts because, let's face it, they know what's going on in the community. They're part of the community, and that was the way that they reached out to these school districts. As you can see on your thing here, that very first handout, 343 of the school districts in Iowa belong to this program. That's over 95% of all the districts belong to this exact program that you guys are a part of, okay? It's an unbelievable program, coverage wise. You got, you need the coverage, it's in there, quite honestly. They've come up with different coverages. They've got a really nice committee that they have that is superintendents, insurance agents, AEA members, some business administrators that they have on a committee. They get together a couple of times a year and try to decide what's important on the districts right now, what are the districts facing, and what coverages could they use in the future, okay? You know, some of those things have been cyber is the biggest one the last couple of years, sexual harassment, prostitution, those sort of things have been in there, and those have been brought because of this committee. So it's been a really, really good program. This program also, if you want to flip to the next page, they have a meeting every year that administrators can go to, insurance agents can go to, board members can go to, and they handed this out in one of the last ones, and I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the details from that. This program actually has a dividend feature as well, which means that they look at the last three years and they already determine if they made money those last three years. And if they did, they give that money back, a portion of that money back to the school, okay? So like on this very first page, this was for the 2021-22 year, by the way. If you look down there towards the bottom, they insured $21 billion worth of assets through this program for local school districts in Iowa. Premiums collected last year were 66 million, right around $66 million. In the lower right-hand corner, total claims paid were $68 billion. So they actually lost money last year on this program a little bit. Other things to know, down in the lower left-hand corner, $96 billion of dividends have been returned to the members through this program. So the problem that we're running into right now is that duratio claim in 2020, they look back three years. So that thing is going to be on there for three years. So chances are, we're not going to give it a dividend until that falls off, okay? I think our last dividend was 2019, and then 2020 hit, and then it's been gone ever since then, okay? Hopefully, we'll get back to the point where they're making money and then be able to give a dividend to the school. Second page there. You know, it kind of shows you some trends just in the claims of our program that we got, you guys are part of. Obviously, 2020 was a rough year for the insurance industry. As you can see, that's, that's really peaked. And even last year, to be honest with you, claims were higher than normal in the program. The weather pattern, like today, the weather pattern has been very unusual. You never see tornadoes in December and January, nor see most of the time. So you're also seeing a trend, like Harley had mentioned, you're seeing a trend of rates going up. I think last year it was 14%, right around there. And this year, they now said, yeah, they're projecting somewhere close to that same amount for this year as well. And then I did throw in the next page there. I always build these meetings because I find them interesting. You know, these are some large claims that happened. You can read through there, but obviously, the duratio, $108 million was paid out for that duratio. Bus driver stopped their cruise and wasn't paying attention. $8.5 million was paid out on that claim. District vehicle failed to yield a semi. $8 million was paid out on that claim. Roofs, you know, we obviously live in Iowa, rain and hail, it's an issue. You can see several of them in here, but 7 million, 4 million, 3 million, all the way down the line. A lot of these things are weather related, and...
This is all just in Iowa?
This is just in Iowa for the last three years. Yep, yep. So that's, so you're seeing, it's not just the severity of them. I mean, they're large claims, but there's just been a lot of them in Iowa, so. And lastly, that thing, it tells you, this pie graph just kind of shows where the claims are being paid out on. Obviously, property is number one, workers' comp is number two, and then the autos, third line item there that they've been paying out on. Now, this other, this other one here is just a nice brochure that EMC has provided with us, kind of talks about their program. The middle page here just shows all the coverages that are available through this program. Property, general liability, auto, E and O, workers' comp, umbrella, abuse, cyber coverages, all the coverages that we've currently got on our plan. But there are some obvious options available there, too. If you guys want more detailed information about the policy itself, you know, always feel free to reach out to us. We've got all that information. We go with, over it every year with Danny and Harley on that stuff. But if you guys ever have individual questions, feel free to reach out to us, but. Oh, the other thing that I want to point out that I don't know that our district has taken full advantage of is these loss control services that are offered. That's the third page in there. But, you know, EMC has this program, and they put tons of money into this school program. And part of that is for loss control, okay? They have people specialized in these areas that are willing to come out free of charge and help our district, okay? One of the biggest ones, school security planning. They'll come out and come up with a school crisis plan with you guys, right alongside you guys, help you with that. They've got security experts that will service right exactly what you guys are looking for. You know, big or small, doesn't matter what size school, they'll come out and do it. If you're looking, if you're thinking about getting some security equipment installed in the school, they'll come out, maybe give you some suggestions on how, where, what other schools are doing, that sort of thing. But these are services that are free of charge that we've offered out there. If we ever want to take advantage of them, that's, that's what they're there for, okay? But they've got some really amazing thing, you know. We in Churys speaking in the school up there, indoor air quality system. They had, a year ago, right before they opened the school, they had a weird smell in the school, couldn't figure it out. So they had EMC come out, figured out it was in the lunchroom area, got it cleaned up, got it taken care of before school happened. They've got a rehab lab plan, which is basically that hazardous chemical management program. They'll come in, they started this probably, I don't know, it's probably 15 years ago now, 10 years ago, and they offered it to the schools. And they reported back that next year that they had disposed of a ton of chemicals that were sitting in schools for years and years and years that shouldn't have been. Flammable, explosive, stuff that shouldn't have been stored together, and they've helped bring this program in. It's still there today, if we ever want to use it again. I think we've gone through that process already, but if it's ever, you know, every two, three years, it's probably a good idea to do something like that. Other control services, they'll come out and do safety reviews of your playgrounds, your equipment, your bleachers. They'll do bus inspections, you know, onsite training. They will have, we've offered this up. You know, one of the biggest things that you guys know is workers' comp. It's a large premium. One of the biggest, best things for our districts is awareness. We've got to make sure that we're talking to our employees about, hey, don't use your chair to go up and put something up there, you know. Be safe, make smart choices. The custodial staff. EMC has all of these safe school online training. They can get on and then watch these videos and learn how they should be doing things. I think you even have that, one of those things on the handout there. 200, almost $250,000, or almost 250,000 training modules were completed online through their safety program last year. I don't know if the schools taking advantage of that or not, but they shouldn't be.
Does there any, can we take advantage of those programs? Or is there discounts and premiums or anything like that?
Not really a discount on it. The biggest thing Jason know would be reduce claims. So that that in turn, because reducing claims is going to get our premiums lower, especially in the workers' comp market, okay? So we go to a lot of businesses and we do, there might be a little different, but we can talk to those and discuss, you know, being safe. Those type of things, awareness is the number one thing with workers' comp. If we can make sure that they know, just be smart, do the right thing, don't take chances. I think we had several claims in the kitchen area. Yep. And so just, you know, they'll come out, they'll even watch your staff work, like in the kitchen area, because we've had a couple of claims there. They'll come out and say, okay, we see that you should probably be doing this instead of the way you're doing it. You know, they have that type of people on staff, that that's all they do. So use them, I guess is what I'm saying. Bring them out, okay?
Does EMC still do roof analysis or do that?
Yep, they'll do roof analysis, building analysis. They've got drones that they can take up over top and take photos of it. So yeah, use them, yep. So if you've got any concerns, if you think that you want to know if in the next five years where you're going to have to replace this roof, they can have people come out and take a look at that for you. Yep. Professionals, all they deal is schools, so. What else? In-service days, they'll come out and send a speaker out to talk. That's something you guys are wanting to take advantage of. I know we talked about that at the last meeting. They'll send somebody out to talk about all these different services, modules, slip and fall, fall prevention, everything. They've got a ton of options for our district if we just use them, okay? All right. Is there any questions on this stuff here, guys, so far? Got any questions?
I'm just kind of, my question would be, because you've mentioned, you've said it a couple of different times, if you would just, if we would just use them. So we're not using them? Do we not, are we not aware of it? I mean, what's that partnership? What, how do you help us use them?
So basically, EMC has got a company out there called Safer Schools, okay? And they've got over 300 modules that you can use that you go online. But that's kind of a process that we can try to help you with, but at the same time, it's got to be something that the school wants them to do. So if we get a new custodian, we should be having them watch this video, right? When we hire them, so they know what to expect, what to look out for, what to be careful of. Same with the cooks, bus drivers, you name it. They've got a module out there that we can go out and have. Now, I don't know, are we using the videos like we should be?
The videos are not being used.
Okay. So these are things that we point out every year, you know, these are the things. In training, you know, we've offered that up a couple of times where if the teachers are in there for an in-service day, bring a speaker in and talk to them about, hey, let's make sure we don't have any work comp claims this year. Because, let's face it, that's a big driver of our premiums that we have to deal with. That's, that's the biggest one that we can affect is the workers' comp. Property is property, wind and hail, that's kind of what's going to drive that. I mean, let's face it, storms, activities is what's going to drive those claims.
So we have to proactively go into that and select which one, which one of those presentations or which one of those things we want to be a part of?
Yep, and it's all free. I mean, you don't have to go in there. You can, I went in there, I walked in there today just to see what it was like. But you just basically, you go to schools and you can choose what you want to watch. There is everything from, you know, sexual harassment, making sure that's not in the workplace. There is that, working with students and making sure, you know, that sexual harassment is a big scare. You don't want to put yourself in a position where you can get accused. So there's all sorts of modules out there that are free of charge that EMC pays for, yep.
For clarity, I have looked at what's available there and reviewed how they are presented. So as we hear all the information tonight, yes, we're there, yes, I'm here.
And they've had this for years, you know, and they, at these meetings, they really stress, you know, using the services that they've got available to them, so. Any other questions on that? All right. Let's see here, sorry, I was trying to find my own spot here. All right. So Albernett Schools started with the EMC program back in the 1980s, approximately. Like I said, we became the agent back in 1995, shortly after we opened our office here in 1994. So the very next year, Bob Ramble was superintendent. We came up, talked to him, and he didn't have any local representation, so they switched it to us, and we've been the agent there ever since. Patty Anderson, Chris Madison, I have been the primary agent servicing the school for most of those years. I've been in the insurance industry for 23 years. Chris is at 25, and Patty Anderson retired in 2019 after 25 years with Neighbor Insurance as well. So we feel like there's experience there for you guys. If you have any questions, my cell phone's always on. Chris is always at the office. If you have anything you need, we'd be more than happy to help. You know, currently, Neighbor Insurance has seven insurance agents that live in Albernett Community School District. We have 23 kids that attend this school. So as you can see, what you guys like to say is we're purple on purpose. We, we're a part of this community. We feel like we've done our part to hopefully come alongside you guys and help you with these services. If there's anything that we're falling short on, we'd love to know about it. Because to be quite honest, that email that we got last week was the first time we've heard any, anybody say that they're not happy with something. So if, if there is something that we could be doing better, we'd love to be able to help you out with that, okay? You know, when I got that email from Harley last week, one of the comments in there was, as the district grows and claims become more prevalent, we are seeking a higher level of service. And to be honest with you, I was, I was a little disappointed when I got that. You know, I just think to myself, why would a school that we have poured so much time, energy, and support into not want to return that support to us? And I'm just being real honest and upfront about this because, you know, it kind of caught us off guard that nobody would have come to us and said anything before that meeting last, last month. And again, I've, I've lost customers before, don't get me wrong, but normally, there's a reason for it, or they talk to us about it. And in this situation, it's just, it was kind of a little bit of a slap in the face because, you know, I've been coaching, this is just me, not the rest of us, but I've been coaching youth football, volleyball, basketball, baseball, softball, as my kids grew up through this community, and I loved it, by the way. I would trade for a thing. I got to know a lot of good families here in Albernett. Every year, our agency financially supports a million programs here. Albernett Foundation, Newsreel Club, FFA, FBLA, music programs, 4H programs, Pirate Cast, sports posters, yearbook, EutherChrist, Albernett Mat Pack, golf outing, and a lot more that I probably forgot about. But my point being is, you know, we want to be there for the school, and I hope that that shows that we want to be there for the school. Anyway, back to that email, you know, I called Chris shortly after we got that, and I said, you know, Chris, in the last 27 years, have we ever had a bad claim for the school? In other words, has EMC ever done a bad job of servicing the client? Have we ever screwed up and not made a change, or made a mistake on a change, or not returned a phone call or email in a timely fashion? All of those answers were no. You know, in fact, there have been times over the years where we've noticed maybe a new vehicle that we weren't told about. Or just this spring, Chris Madison saw Corey Arment driving down the street on a new Gator heading toward the complex. And she thought to herself, I don't have insurance, I don't have a Gator on the insurance policy. So she emailed Harley, and sure enough, they'd gotten one and just had forgotten to notify us. So Chris got the van, add that on, we're good to go. But those type of things would be noticed by an agent that wasn't in town or working closely with the district, so. To finish up, you know, we're pretty blessed. You know, I'm part of two businesses here in Albernett. Owner, I'm part owner of two businesses here in Albernett, Farmer State Bank and Neighbor Insurance. And we love being part of a small community. One thing that we notice is how good those communities support each other. Just because our district might be growing or doesn't, doesn't mean that we need to change who we are or forget how we got there. And I hope that, I hope that we keep going on the path we're going. When I graduated from college, my first full-time job was working right up here at Farmer State Bank as an ag lender in the Albernett office. One of my main jobs started out was going, setting up farmer visits. And I was lucky enough that my grandfather, Morris, was still with us then, and he loved going on these farmer visits. And so when I set these up, we'd go out, we'd meet with farmer and talk to them and that sort of thing. And I remember this like yesterday, on the drive back to the office, he must not have been real impressed with the way I left that farmer, because he said, you know, make sure every time you're out there, you thank your customers, shake their hands, and say how much we appreciate your business, because without them, we don't have a business. So thank you, guys, for your business, we appreciate it. If there's any questions or anything like that we can help you with, we'd love to. Got anything?
I think my only, my only question is, let's just say we chose a different charity. And, you know, as much as I appreciate all the ways you contribute to our community, let's say we did go for somebody else. Are those contributions going to be pulled? Are you going to scale back?
You know, that's a good question. You know, honestly, I'll be honest with you. You know, we do like to do business with people who'd like to do business with us. I mean, I think that, I think any business is going to say that. You know, a couple of years ago, you guys moved the group health insurance plan from Neighbor Insurance to an agency down in Cedar Rapids. I'm not even sure who they're, who you're with now, but I guess my question back is, has that agency ever given a dime to Albernett? You guys know?
I don't know.
Have they ever donated anything? My guess is no. So, I mean, don't get me wrong, obviously, we're still going to support Albernett Schools and everything, you know, our kids go here, you know, we're entrenched in this community. Do you think it's going to scale back? It probably won't, to be all honest with you.
With all due respect, it feels a little bit like an ultimatum. The way it's being presented, with all due respect, like you do me, I do you. But given that email, what you said in there, a higher level of support. I'm curious if the conversation went back to these guys as to what does that mean to them? And I would like to give you guys the opportunity to explain because I don't look at a higher level of support as a, that, we don't think that you're doing a good job. Hang on a second. That you're not doing a good job. They're looking for something in addition. And this is your opportunity to do that in addition. And I just would like a little clarification, not to put you guys on the spot, but what does a higher level of support mean? Because I don't necessarily take it as negative.
It wasn't support, it was, it was service. Higher level of service is what she said. And I would love, I would love to know that too, Dale, if you can answer that, because I have no idea.
I will take this one. So when I say a higher level of support or service, what that means is, like I mentioned in the opening of this, like, I am no expert in work comp. I would love to be. I'm no expert in property insurance or auto insurance. Sometimes things do slip by, but every day, there are thousands of things that I have to do. And this is one thing that does need attention. And I can't, I can get these resources, and they're wonderful, but somebody needs to help me. I need help. I, I, I need somebody that can help, help get our leaders on board with slips, trips, and balls and training on that. And I need, I need somebody to digest the information and give it to me in a way that I can understand. And that's really what I'm hoping for. And it's not that you guys haven't done great. And I love that you're a part of the community, and that's not it. It's, it's the, I need, I need the help. I, I need an extension of me, of my team, my team. I need a team extension. I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about it. I, I, it is, yeah, it's, it's the service. It's the, above, beyond what EMC offers is, what they offer is great. I just need help digesting that.
So can you give me an example of how exactly you would picture something like that? In other words, we've got the services there. How can we, I mean, we can contact EMC for you and have them come out. Obviously, we can explain, like, we've sat down, we've, we've talked about questions you've had on those renewals and why the premiums are going up and those sort of things. And I feel like you can answer that, but what can we do?
Yeah, so for example, we had our recent survey, EMC came out, they do annual, bi-annually, whatever. The guy spent hours with Corey and came back with like three things The guy spent hours with Cory and came back with like three things that we could improve on and it was moving boxes from fire exits, like it was nothing that was substantial and that could actually mitigate risk for this district. What I need is somebody to hold their hand and be like, "You need to do better." You need to give them something that they can, that's tangible. And I just don't, I don't have the time to do that, it's their job to do that. And I guess I believe that it's the agent's job to hold them to their job too. And that's kind of where I'm.
So, and I think that the best approach to this conversation, this particular topic is at the end of both presentations. Let's just allow the whole process to unfold, see what we then know. And then if you want to ask that question again, we'll take it.
That kind of help you?
Yeah.
So, this is Holmes Murphy and they have sent me a presentation, so I'm going to get that off.
Okay. How's everybody doing?
Good, good. I mean, one second, you guys have been here for a while, maybe grab a drink or anything, you good?
This one turned off. Turn that one on and this one turn off.
Oh, that's a good. All right. I should only jerk. It was a last-minute decision from the week before. Since we didn't have a whole bunch of snow, I like that.
I started six thirty. Everything looks good. I'll be here. Even though I've talked a long time about the van, it keeps asking. Probably don't need.
For sure. Do you look at the requirements and look for a photo for the van?
It's linear, right? Yes.
Oh, wow, that makes it doesn't. Seriously, so it doesn't.
This one's labeled. Okay, you get one at the end. Touch it and it'll just flip out. Okay.
Get it?
Oh, now I clicked it twice. There we go. Chromecast, we are, this is Chromecast, it works well for us. Oh, the TV's come loaded.
Alrighty. Hope kills, not the kills, though.
I have no idea that.
And go.
I think that one just turned itself off, damn it. Alright, let's try two again.
Everyone see that?
Let's try two more. No, I'm saying. You need to be a grown-up arouser to. So, let's just get one off.
Alright, guess what we're going to do? Call in on the wall and then a full PowerPoint on my computer.
Just when you said that.
Okay. I'll just let you tap through.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, well, now that we got the technical difficulties taken care of, just first and foremost, want to say thank you. I've been an opportunity, obviously, to meet you guys a few times and I appreciate all the time spent, but I have an opportunity to meet you all, so I appreciate you allowing us to come, learn a little bit about Holmes Murphy. So, my name is Justin Allendorf, I work for Holmes Murphy. Like I said, I've been with the agency for seven years now. Recently got married a couple of weeks ago, so it's been an exciting time and equally as excited to present here to you guys today.
My name is Chris Fisher, I've been with Holmes Murphy's for twenty years. I've been a shareholder of the company since two thousand and eight. And just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to present today. So, Holmes Murphy, just a little bit about Holmes Murphy. Does anyone, you guys know who Holmes Murphy is? Is anyone familiar with Holmes Murphy?
And I hope you get benefit. We do use that for our benefits.
Okay, so, Holmes Murphy, we just celebrated our ninetieth anniversary this last year. And as you can see, we're a large organization. We've got quite a few offices up and down the central part of the United States. We're the twenty-sixth largest insurance brokerage firm in the country. And what really separates us, what we think separates us, is our commitment to remain independent. We're an employee-owned organization. And instead of, you know, living and dying by quarterly profit results, you know, what we're doing is we're aiming to be the one for our customers and our employees. So, Holmes Murphy, a little bit about Holmes Murphy. Harley mentioned that we handle your employee benefits, which is likely actually had an opportunity to discuss property casualty needs with you. So, as you can see, we've got a lot of expertise in this area. I, across the state, Holmes Murphy handles numerous school districts. I actually work with College Community School District in the Seerapids area. I've handled their account for, I've been on the team for several years, we've handled it for several years before that. So, we've got a lot of expertise when it comes to school districts and working with EMC. So, you want to talk a little bit about, yeah, say, talk a little bit about EMC?
Yeah. So, to frame this conversation, I want to put this out on the table. We're not looking to move you guys from EMC. We know that they are the premier partner for school districts and the Jester program does a great job, offers obviously a lot of great resources. We're trying to take where you're at today and we're trying to learn as much as we can about you and what you want to see from us and then where are we going to take you into the future? So, we're not looking to get away from the Cadillac, if you will, in the industry of this insurance program, although we feel there's ways we can make it even better. Our strategy is focused on long-term risk management mitigation and obviously, long-term cost savings. So, leading up to this point, what we've already done with the help of Dr. Trimble and Harley was go through our process. We did not touch on the cultural values piece. This is definitely something we can do later, but really, it's just to get a pulse, who you guys are as an organization, what do you value, how can we best support you? And we accomplished a lot of that here in this second box, so this is called our understanding our process. So, you know, I haven't been married for very long, a couple of weeks in fact, but I understand, you know, what it takes to have a good marriage is good partnership and a lot of understanding. So, we took, you know, multiple meetings on the front end to learn as much as we could about who you are and then that led into the A, R, and the T. So, the A stands for avoid, so we're avoiding risk. So, we're, that's your loss control and safety, what are we doing from that standpoint? The R stands for reduce. You can be the safest organization out there, but claims are going to happen, they're inevitable. So, when those claims do happen, what are we doing to help support you? How are we getting those claims handled in a timely fashion? And then the T stands for transfer, so we're transferring our risk utilizing the insurance vehicle. So, we went through this assessment along with their help. We essentially benchmarked where you're at today and where you want to go. And then we came back, presented them with what we call the impact plan. And essentially, this is, once we've had a chance for them to meet the team, for us to sit down with our team after that and say, what are the three to five biggest ways that we can make an impact in the next twelve months with this organization? And then we bring that out, we lay it out in simple terms, here's the three to five ways, here's what we're going to do, and then put it on a timeline. Because if we don't put it on the calendar, if we don't have dates to meet, as I'm sure you could assume, things do not get done. So, we presented that impact plan and that's a lot of what we're going to focus on here in these next few slides. What are we actually going to do? We know you pay a lot of money for insurance, you know, this program's awesome, they have a lot of good resources, but what are we, what are you getting from an agency standpoint? What are you getting from a service standpoint from us? We get paid, you know, you pay a good amount of money, like I said, what are you getting? So. So, the first one starts with that avoid piece. So, avoid, again, that's safety and risk and safety and loss control. So, we want to pair with EMC, as we've done in the past, to help really formalize your safety and help, but with our safety experts, help design and implement that safety plan. From our conversations, these are just a few of the items that we felt could make the biggest impact. The first of those being, coming up to attend the internal leadership meetings with each one of the departments. We can't have a good understanding of the best way to help each one of those departments unless we actually come out or part of those discussions, figure out what they actually need from us and our loss control people and also so we can communicate that back to EMC. On top of that, once we have done that work and been part of those meetings, we're going to help tailor those trainings to those specific departments. You know, there are a few problem areas within school after reviewing the loss runs from a claim standpoint. So, one of those obviously is the lunch service, you know, we've seen an uptick in claims on that and also with the custodial staff, those are really where our problems lie. So, we'll focus a good amount of time on that, on that piece. Also, in tandem with that, we had a tornado in the vicinity today. We're going to review the emergency and incident response plans that you have in place, make sure those are tailored, but not just tailored, but trained upon. Up here on the right, you know, one of the big things too is your fleet. That's auto and property are really big dollar value claims. So, when those happen, what have we done? Do we have the right protections in place? How are we mitigating those? What does our safety standards look like? And I keep having to get back to this, but have we trained them on it? And then, going along with that, EMC, they come out once a year, maybe twice at the very most. When they're coming out, what are they focused on? From our understanding, from our conversations, they're very focused on what is. We want them to focus on what could be. So, we're going to pair with them to focus their efforts when they come out to do those visits because they really do have those experts, although we have loss control experts of our own that can definitely help. They're the experts in schools, they have been for many, many years. We want them to focus on behavioral-based risk mitigation. So, looking at what they're, what each one of these people are doing and how can they do their functions safer? How can we mitigate claims on the front end? And then the last piece, EMC obviously has a great online training platform. We really feel like we also, as Holmes Murphy, have a very robust training platform. It's called KPA Risk Management, it's free to any one of our customers. It's valued at thirty-two thousand dollars and it is just a library of great tools, trainings, quizzes, and we can help you take that information because it is such a massive library. Take it and figure out how to best utilize it, assign trainings. Meet with the head of our system and say, "What do you want this to look like?" We don't need everything in the kitchen sink. What is applicable to you, how are we going to make it better? And how can we add this to onboarding or continuing training? So, that's really what we intend to do from a safety standpoint. Any questions on that? I know I threw a lot at you. Anybody?
So, the R and avoid is for reduce. So, once we have a claim, you know, our goal is to get that claim closed out as soon as possible. So, the longer a claim stays open, in the long run, the more it's going to cost to your school district. So, you would be assigned a claims advocate that works on your behalf, doesn't work for EMC or your other carriers, that would just be dedicated solely, but would be responsible for all of your claims. And there's a number of services that person would do, but really, just working to make sure that we're advocating on Alvernet School District's behalf, trying to get those claims closed out sooner. So, quarterly claim reviews, making sure the reserve levels are properly set, trying to get things closed out before the experience amount is calculated. So, a number of efforts in terms of just trying to get that claim reduced once it happens and get that closed out as soon as possible.
And too, I think, worth pointing out this last bullet here, we have a lot of great data collected from you guys, but what are we doing with that data? You know, how are we using it to make you guys a better organization? And so, taking that, this person's function, not only is it to help, you know, hold your hand through the claim and make sure that's one less thing on Harley's desk, but it also to take that data and communicate with the loss control staff or EMC and say, hey, here's what we need. Any questions on the claims portion?
And just clarify, I will still, I would still be involved in all of that, I would just be somebody to help me along the way.
Exactly. So, although we did a deep dive in the policy, we have plenty of school districts that we work with that are in the Jester program, so we weren't going to focus on the minute details of the insurance piece. We're really good at insurance, we know the program, there's obviously little tweaks that we found, but what we felt the most impactful thing to highlight on is what you've probably been hearing nonstop about in the news, it's about cyber insurance. So, what are the things to think about and how are we going to protect you on an ongoing basis? Because the standard of care for cyber insurance is going to get worse. It's just, there's going to be more rules, there's going to be a lot more to know. So, just looking at schools as a whole, schools, they have a number of, there's a number of documents, data, what have you, that contributes to the overall risk surface of an organization. And a few of those are student health records, financial information, social security numbers, just any personally identifiable information. So, we know those exist, what are we doing to help you guys protect those? So, first and foremost, we have a team of experts, their whole job is cyber insurance coverage. They've come from the carrier side, we brought them on to own this, to know the standards, how to talk the lingo, how to negotiate on your behalf, from just placing the coverage all the way to, you know, when a claim happens. They know this line of business, the ins and outs. So, we have that team in place. On top of that, we only work with certain markets on the cyber insurance front. Today, if I recall correctly, I think you might be with Boyd's one, not typically a carrier that I would work with for cyber. There's ones that I feel like have a really robust product and that can get to a price point very similar to what we have today. And that their coverage is better aligned with what you're doing. And then also, with our help, with our team's help, we can get some of those protections in place. Part of those, that help that we provide, is every year, we come out and go through our cybersecurity checklist. This is a living document, so every year it gets updated because the standards, like I said, they keep getting updated. And so, we'll sit down, walk through and say, hey, what do you have in place? What should we get in place? Which leads into this, when there are stuff that you don't have, that we should probably think about getting put in place, you know, lean on us, we have relationships, we can lean on EMC, we can use all of what we know and who we know to help provide some of this at hopefully a discounted price and sometimes even free. So, this is really just the cyber portion. Any questions about insurance as a whole, cyber piece, I know this is super topical right now?
What type of cyber incidents are we talking about?
Yeah, so the number one cyber incident is ransom attacks. So, whether that comes through phishing attempts, it looks like it's an email coming from someone within the organization, but in actuality, it's not, they've been able to mirror that email address, but that's one we see all the time.
So, attack coming through a student or through administration, either where we talk or through a teacher?
Typically, it's going to come through someone employed by your organization. I don't know, again, it's a really good point considering, I don't know what your IT infrastructure looks like right now, but that's something we have the resources to be able to do. How are you protecting your, I'm sure you have wifi, how are you protecting yourself from, you know, students potentially being on wifi or even people coming in after hours to use a gym and getting on the wifi? There's a lot of different ways to do it, and it's a good point when we come out to go through this checklist is to check some of those boxes to figure out where your biggest vulnerabilities lie.
Do you guys insure anybody now that has had cyber attacks or cyber issues?
Yeah, I've had several clients of mine that have, yeah. Six-figure plus ransomware events. So, you know, it's kind of strange to say, but, you know, when you're working with the cyber liability carriers, they know who's reputable hackers, believe it or not, and ones that you can trust and so forth in terms of ransomware. And the big piece with there is the PR that goes along with it. They've got PR firms that are set up to help you through this process. So yes, we've dealt with quite a few.
Unfortunately, it's, that area of insurance has exploded. The claims are bigger than ever. They're more prevalent. They're happening more than ever. It's just an area that we've obviously put a lot of emphasis on. To add to that, we're part of a broker network called TechAssure, and it's a very small self-contained broker network, but it's just, the agencies are very focused on getting dialed in on where that marketplace is at and what are the best ways to protect our clients. Any additional questions? So really, those three tenants I laid out there, the avoid, reduce and transfer, that's what we went through. That was what the impact plan implied. You know, that was to show them, although we don't show you both, although we don't want to move you from the EMC program because we know how great it is and we know how hard it is for, other insurance carriers have tried to enter into that space and they can't compete, whether it's on a coverage basis or whether it's on a pricing basis. So we know that's the premier, so what are we getting for that service? And then kind of the icing on the cake, these are the people that you'd actually be interacting with. So Chris and myself, we have two people that support us that Dr. Trimbley and Harley had an opportunity to meet, as well as Christie from her risk management consulting side, Adriana, a claims specialist, and then Rhonda. She helps actually with the placement of our insurance. So the market is ever-changing, so we need to know. We need to have somebody, a go-to person that knows, has a pulse in the market. You know, who the carriers we can go to. When something pops up and we're 30 days out from renewal and a cyber carrier says, hey, we don't have those protections in place like you need for us to offer terms, we run into a Rhonda and we say, hey, Rhonda, you know, what's out there for us? Who is available? And they have the relationships that we need. So this is what the team looks like. We want to show you that we have a deep bench that we're thinking about. You guys, we assign this based on people that have competencies in your area. Any questions on the team? Thank you guys again and open to questions.
Where are you guys located out of?
We're in Cedar Rapids.
You're in Cedar Rapids?
Yeah, so we've had an office in Cedar Rapids for over 25 years. I've been with the company 20 years, so I've been with it most of the time. We've been in Cedar Rapids.
Cedar Rapids obviously as well, I live in there.
Is that team, is most of them local? Or I suppose it doesn't necessarily need to be either.
Most of them are. There are a few that are not local. The great thing about our organization is, you know, we don't operate in silos or profit centers, so we've got over 1,000 employees. So if there's someone, even on the team that's assigned to your account that doesn't have an expertise that we need or has difficulty with something, we've got access to all 1,000-plus employees. You know, we're a flat organization, so we like to say one Jersey, one team. So we jump in and try to help out.
Any other questions?
Let's ask about some money, right? So this is not about changing carriers or coverage. I think we've heard both talk about intention to reduce costs year by year, which is in our premiums. So what about the way you get paid? Let's be clear with the board. Are we looking at any savings here? You're paid the same. I mean, I know the answer to that question, but do you want to speak to that either of you?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, with the EMC program, every agent's the same rate no matter what. So between us, Holmes Murphy, TruNor, whatever, whoever's got that account, it's the same commission. And we can't reduce it either, so.
This is a really dumb question. Is EMC even having competition? I have no idea.
No, not in Iowa. There were several carriers that came in about 15, 20 years ago that tried to compete, that are successful in other states.
So they have a little bit of an op.
They do, and there's a group out there right now that's got like 18 districts in the whole state and that's it. And it's not even an insurance company. It's a risk pool where they put their money together, kind of insure each other, but the problem with that is it's not fully insured. So if they have a claim that's huge, they might have to assess their members back in additional cost. So I don't recommend doing that.
It's more of a bill sharing type?
Yeah, it's kind of like, yeah, they consider it a pool is what they consider it.
I used to work for a roof consulting company back in the early 2000s when EMC was taking on all the schools. They had employed us to go and look at all these schools in Iowa. And at the time, I think we looked at 99% of the schools in Iowa. The only ones that we didn't look at were Des Moines because they were all self-insured. They still have that program?
Just for clarity, that, those are not the reasons we're at the table. Who could save us more money on fees or anything like that? This is true about the service.
Yeah, and here's one. You know, and I said this kind of at the top, but our focus is on long-term risk mitigation strategy, which will in turn, if we stick to the impact plan, which is a living document, we revisit that every year with every client and say, we put dates on the calendar, what are we going to do next 12 months? How are we making a better organization? And I know this sounds really woo-woo-y, but really, how you save money and how you negotiate better with the carrier, whether it's EMC or whomever, is by telling a more effective story. So if we have a baseline of where you are, what we're going to do with you in the next 12 months to make you that better organization, what powerful story we can tell. And hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll show them the premiums.
The whole idea would be to really reduce claims essentially. There is no deduction in fees because of we did this program, that program or this one.
EMC prices all the schools the same, whether they're huge, little, small, whatever. I mean, it doesn't matter. They use the same pricing. So they don't give a better rate for Westmoreland or Southport. They get the same rate.
But it has to, with the experience rating and the work comp claims, that would affect that.
That's the big problem.
That's huge. Yeah, and so reducing, if 20% of our claim dollars are work comp, that needs to be reduced now. And I can tell you from my work, like, we have done, we have worked a lot on reducing our claims and it does make a huge, huge difference in our premiums.
Especially because we've seen huge increases to loss from the various work comp like.
And I can tell you from my perspective, from my work, is that our insurance agent, they come to every one of our safety meetings that we have. They're involved. They're telling us. If we, if we're starting to experience increased slips, trips and falls, like, what's going on? Like, what are you guys doing? Like, what? And so to be able to have that partner, to be able to come in and help and walk alongside you, because I'm not an expert in it either. So I feel your pain. So it does help to have somebody to come along beside you when it's not your area of expertise.
So in hearing what Harley had said before about needing that piece from an insurance agent, you guys would need that additional team member that would say, hey, let's do this program. Let's bring this in and let's do this and see if we can get some work. That's the kind of thing that you guys would offer?
Exactly. More of a boots-on-the-ground approach. Getting that team out, getting them involved, getting us all rolling above the same ground.
So how does that work exactly? So do you contact Harley and say, hey, we're going to come out and talk to your custodial staff about this, this and this? Can we do that? Or Harley would say, yeah, that sounds good?
It's very much a team. I mean, so I can speak to the fact that this is very much parallels the benefits side of it. And so I do have experience there in that we did switch to Homes Murphy and it has been very much a team approach. We have dates on the calendar when we are going to meet. Quarterly, we do the review. Annually, three times a year, we get together and talk about what the renewal looks like. And it's just very like methodical and there's just like a real strong approach to a team. I know that I can always pick up the phone and call, but there's just not a lot of like structure currently and just, and the proactiveness is missing. And that's really where I feel like we can assess.
Can I just speak to that for one second? Sure. You know, if someone, you know, we've talked about these options we have. If someone would just tell us, you know, if that's what you're looking for, you know, we just need to know about it. You know, we never, we do that with a lot of companies where we meet with them weekly and talk about, I mean, not weekly, kind of more like monthly, they call toolbox meetings, where we talk about workers' comp. But we got to know that it's okay to do that too. And, you know, if that's what you're looking for, you just got to let us know, you know? Because we've got the same services. EMC is the experts and all this stuff. They're the ones that have the safety, the guys that come out and look at it. Their final word goes. So that's really who we're trying to satisfy and trying to get them to, you know, vote our school district. But we just got to, we just got to know. You know, we've got these services, we point them out to them, but I don't think a lot of them is being used. But if there's additional things that you want from us, you just got to tell us.
Procedurally for a second, I'd like to interject. If you have any specific questions, since Holmes Murphy kind of has this part of the floor, let's wrap that up and let them sit down. Then it is time for the board to have conversation, which means you can continue to ask questions.
Do you guys have any more questions for Holmes Murphy? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do you want to add a discussion, do you?
No, not really. I'd like to let the board just think. Or what questions you have for us.
I guess I don't have any questions. I understand that now. I understand what Harley's looking for. My personal opinion is that if there's that, if there's that need, communicate, communicate, communicate. Based on service, service levels, I can't speak to it. I don't know. You know, I'm not, I'm not working on your property claims every day. You are. But I know that I'm perp on purpose and I'm a very well person. So for me, to speak to this, I can't, I can't make a change based on what I've seen tonight. That's just my personal opinion. I think that there may be room for neighbor insurance to maybe step up their game a little bit and be a little bit more proactive. If that's the case, I'll be, but that's what my head is.
I'm going to ask Harley if she can say one. Would you like to speak to the board about the, I guess I'll just call it workload around work comp claims?
Did you say workload?
Work comp. The workload around work comp.
How many, how much of your time?
Even just what that looks like.
Sure, yeah, because I have no idea.
Yeah, so, well, it obviously all ups and flows. When it rains, it pours, it feels like. But like right now, right now we don't have any, but I think we just had three. When a claim comes in, it's just sporadic. We do have EMC on coloners, which is something that was, the neighbor insurance had bring to us and I did set it up. But it's really about like the consistency, like so an employee is hurt, they're going to physical therapy three times a week or two times a week. And there have been follow-up appointments every two weeks or whatever. And I'm following what their return to work is, if they have any restrictions and those kind of things. But really the workload, that would continue to stay on me, but it's those questions that I have. So we had a claim that got pretty nasty and I had, I had no idea. I was more of the EMC, I was asking them. It's just, that's something that would be nice to just that person to be able to bounce things off of. But honestly, it's not, I don't know, that's not.
You can correct that.
That's the answer to what you're asking. Is there a better question?
I would just, I would just like to add my two cents, I guess, towards work too. You know, just because I want to be speaking on. I don't know everything that comes across your desk or anything that way as well, you know, with what you've got to deal with. You know, neighbors being in the community, I mean, that's a lot. That speaks a lot to, I think, you know, almost everybody that would be involved in the community. And it's not necessarily a, you scratch your back, I'll scratch your back, but in essence, it kind of revolves around that way. And I don't think Mark was necessarily saying that he wasn't going to be here and be part of the community involved in the school, I mean, he is. But at the same time, they've got, they've got a long history with the school. They've got a long history in the community and they've got a lot of kids. Now, on him, the company per se has a lot of people. They've got some depth in the community. You know, and the case in point you brought up, which is no disrespect to your job either, because, you know, we get busy with things ourselves, but, you know, with the, with the gator, whatever it was, you know, it's just, that's just a, and I don't think he was pointing that out to be, to be, you know, bad mouthed or anything that way because nobody's perfect there. I think he was just making a point that during the community, he saw that and took care of it. And if there is somebody he's got to step his game up with on something, you know, maybe, you know, maybe we need to address that or maybe we need to let him know, you know, what else we can use the help at. You know, just so that somebody knows what they need, maybe improve upon in that respect.
Well, I can agree with that and yes, it was something to slip by because it's not usually a vehicle that's on the road. So it was something that was very new to me. Where, where I would like to like really make sure you focus your attention on is like, so like our renewal, we didn't get until after June 30th. Yeah, so like we got our renewal after, renewals already happened. It's those proactive conversations on how do we guide the district and make the right decisions? And, you know, are they, are we negotiating about our renewals? Are we making sure we're, we're putting the district out there to? And I understand that, and if that's where you guys want to go, that's where you want to go. The loyalty and I also believe in neighbor insurance. This is actually very hard for me, but I do think it's a business decision as well. And I just want you to hear me say that.
I think you took the words out of my head. It's a business. I mean, it feels a little personal right now and it's, it should be a business decision. I think the difference is what I'm hearing is proactive versus reactive. Let me, let me, tell me where you need my help versus, versus you need to tell me when you need my help. That's a present, sounds tight, right? But, you know, one being, we're here, we've got a team for you. Let's dig in versus you need to let me know what you want. So it, it, you know, for me, it, I would weigh more towards the Holmes Murphy. And it has absolutely nothing against neighbor insurance whatsoever. But I do feel like when I look at Harley and her job and the overwhelmingness of what insurance is all about, having that extra support and having that extra team that can come along beside you, it, it makes a huge difference in your job. That's not what we want Harley focusing on because it's not her area of expertise.
I just have a question for neighbor insurance there. How easily do you think it would be that you guys could provide more support to Harley in the way that she's stopping? Do you think that's something you'd easily do?
Absolutely.
With your staff?
Yeah, we, you know, I guess one of the things, you know, Harley, if, and again, I wasn't pointing any of this stuff. I wasn't trying to be confrontational on this thing. I was trying to point those things out because some of you people might not know that. You know, maybe, maybe they don't know how involved we are trying to be in the community. And we're trying to do that obvious, for obvious reasons. We want to support the school. But, you know, if you're having trouble with a work comp claim like that, you got to give one of us a call because we don't know if you have, you know, if you would have had that problem and reached out to one of us, we would have been on the ball trying to help you in any way we could, honestly. I mean that. But we got to know about it. Now, if there's certain things that you want us to add, you know, obviously we do the one annual renewal that goes over the written premiums and that sort of thing, but if there's other services that you need from us, give us an idea of what you want us to do as far as focus on and we can do it.
How might you change? How, how might you change the way you advocate for the district and, um, the, the loss claim ratio and getting in front of that more?
So, I mean, uh, like we said before, the workers' comp experience mod, you know, that's based off of how much premium you pay in, how many claims are turned in, the amount of claims that are paid out, you know, the main thing we gotta do is help reduce those claims for, you know, we can go back to EMC and, you know, advocate all we can for you guys, that still doesn't change that experience mod, so that experience mod is law, it's not like we can go back to say, you know, they, this is the first time they've had two claims in one year, can we get that premium lower, no, you can't, that's not gonna change it, um.
So I asked the same question.
Yeah, what are you gonna do to, in the future, to help reduce that mod rate?
Yeah, so most of the things that we're talking about, loss control.
Because for me, like, if EMC comes out and we've got a 20% claims, I got a problem with their only thing, saying now we need to move boxes.
Well, and I would like to let Holmes Murphy answer this, sorry, I'm sorry, because I, they did bring something up in an impact plan that made a lot of sense, do you guys wanna talk about work, the mod rate and how you guys advocate for that?
Yeah, so, and we touched on it a little bit through the presentation, but a big part of what we do, so the mod gets promulgated about six months before, uh, your renewal date, and at that point, we set time to review that with you, see what we have open, you know, talk about the reserves on some of the claims that are still open, um, see if we can't negotiate those, so there, you know, there's an opportunity during that inflection point to, to do something, although, is it successful 100% of the time, definitely not, but from a proactivity standpoint, you know, a big part of what we do is come out and work alongside you, figure out ways that we can, you know, tell your story more effectively by giving you the resources, helping you build the plans, talking to the people, you know, that boots in the, on the ground approach that I have mentioned, it's, it's one thing to, to talk about risk, but at, at the end of the day, what type of plans do we have in place, are there things set aside, time set aside to educate, you know, do people understand how that impacts, how that mod impacts the organization, how that impacts, you know, there's also some education available there too, um, but really, I just think it comes down to being proactive, looking for the, minding the gaps, finding those areas for improvement and, and working alongside.
Adjusters, if you don't, I, adjusters have, you know, 200 plus claims on their desk, and if you don't have anyone advocating on their behalf, it's gonna get to the bottom, so really, on a quarterly basis, we're falling out, especially on the large claims, and there's a lot of times that claims stay open way longer than they should, and by constantly bird dogging it and being in front of them, you know, you can be successful in reducing the amount of those claims, you know, reserves can be lowered in a lot of cases, sometimes the claim can actually be closed out, there's nothing going on, there's a reserve there, so just really staying on top of it and, you know, knowing that, you know, the claim adjuster has, uh, a number of files on their desk and trying to bring our files to the top and talking about it.
And this is not the first time I've asked that question of neighbor insurance and what response I, we got was the online training modules.
For the save, for the loss control?
Mm-hmm, which is legitimate, I understand, those are resources, I just, it's not the first time I've asked that question, that is all we got.
So are you, you're looking for somebody to kinda help administer these loss control services that EMC has offering, offerings for, so I guess what I would propose and, and, or where I'm at on this thing is, is I know Holmes Murphy, they're, they're a pillar probably, EMC Robinson aren't going anywhere anytime soon, I would look to neighbor insurance and say, hey, let's give these guys a year to see if they can administer some of these loss control services, get on board with you when it comes to renewal time and, and walk you through those things and make sure that you know exactly where things are going, you use them as a reference or as a, maybe as that first contact, if you have a, uh, what was the 20% on work comp claim, you know, so that they can do their job in servicing eldernet community schools, and after a year trial, if it doesn't seem to be working, then we come back together and decide whether or not to pull the plug in a little different direction.
Is it which one, Tom? Yeah.
We continue with neighbor insurance, giving them a year of chance to administer some of these loss control services by your side, and you use them as your first call if you have a work comp claim, so that they can help you with that, we do kind of a year trial, let it go on, if it doesn't seem to improve enough for that year, we come back together and talk about pulling the plug, because I know Holmes Murphy more than likely doesn't want any of that.
And even to add to your point, Tom, I guess, you know, um, I'm kinda, you know, in the dark on all this stuff myself, I would just assume, because I'm hearing a case, but I don't have any, you know, plausible story behind either one, for example, I know they've been in the community for a long time, you know, I, I'd stand behind them long before I'd stand behind you guys, no, no disrespect there, honestly, um, but my point is, you know, maybe we need to seize a little bit more feedback, you know, even, I don't know if you wanna say, you know, quarterly or semester, whatever, we just need to hear a little more feedback from, from who we've got servicing our community schools so that we can all make a, you know, a, an informed decision based upon what we're kinda seeing and hearing too, that's, I just put that out there.
Yeah, it's true that we're kinda receiving a little bit of a snapshot of Tom, and I know you guys have kind of alluded to a few points here and there, but, um, but I'd say, you know, neighbor insurance, they'll be more, more aware of what we're looking for as a district, give them a chance to do it.
I do respect in here what you're saying, and if that's the direction you go, that's exactly what, what will happen, um, I would like to just, perspective, um, yes, we could have been asking, yes, we'll own that 100% in my 11th year, we're also listening to a company that wouldn't require us to always be asking and thinking about what we should be asking, there's a huge difference.
Your mind, what were your thoughts there?
Because I'm, I'm, what I'm hearing is, uh, neighbor has a lot of, it's really, he's making it sound like he's got the same qualities to, to provide as Holmes Murphy, and obviously he was asking, and I, I'm a little bit that I agree with Harley, it doesn't sound like she asked for help, it's that he, he's acting like he was blindsided by this request for, for help, and I don't know, I don't know if that's true or not, but.
That is exactly what I meant by my comment, that I completely own, that is exactly how it has unfolded, I just wanted to reiterate, what you're hearing tonight is the difference between us getting ourselves organized to know what to ask for versus a company that's gonna come to us and say, here are the things you should be asking, and here's how we will help you do that, so you're, I'm not disagreeing at all, and we're completely own that we have not asked.
So, to that end, I'm a little more, absolutely towards Tom's proposal, but at the same time, you know, we got a company that's provided service for a lot of years to us and, um, and I would, I guess I would hope that we wouldn't have to ask if, when we've got somebody that's invested in our community that wants to see our, our school taken care of, I guess I, I, I shouldn't have to ask for help either, especially when you don't know what to ask for, is that exactly where you're at?
And I, I, I know we have not directly asked, but that is what that annual meeting is for, the renewal meeting and, and I don't, I don't, I, I don't wanna sit here and, you know, tit for tat kinda thing, because that's not how, you know, but I'm not understanding that, it's not for complete lack of trying, um, but when we do ask, we get what you guys thought tonight, sat on our desk, and that's what we get, and so, I just mean, I mean more than that, just in my daily work, there's a lot, and that's just not how, that's not helpful.
Well, and I think that's, I think that's come out now, and I think neighbor, neighbor insurance has had an opportunity to hear what we need or what you need in terms of support, and then somebody, you know, beside you to, to lead you down the right direction or the right path or, or show you some of the things, you know, a, a loss control module that, hey, I think, I, I noticed a tick up in claims here, let's get this loss control module going for you guys so that you guys can, you know, that's kinda what I would like to hear from you guys, that you'd be able to do that, and administer, administer some of those things so it's not something that, you know, it's probably based more on claims, though, wouldn't it be, if we have a tick up in a certain claim, then you guys should see that and say, hey, look, I think we could help with reducing claims in this department.
I'd like to pose a question around that then, what I would ask any employee here when they're trying to project into, here's what I can do, I would say to any employee, what evidence do you have that you really can accomplish that, so that's my question, what evidence do you have that you can bring things to us in this more proactive manner?
Yeah, um, you know, the hard part about insurance is, you know, every customer wants something different, I'll be honest with you, um, you know, for instance, some customers, you know, we can go into a meeting and give them this information in there, they'll take it and they'll run with it and they'll use it, you know, I'm hearing Harley that you want us to help you on that, and we just have never heard that before, so, uh, let us try, and again, if it doesn't work in a year, fine, but let us give it a shot and come alongside you and hopefully help you with those things, um, I mean, I guess that's all we can do because, you know, like I said, each company's a little different, some of them really want service, some of us don't even want to see us once a year, you know, so it just depends, and now that we know this is what you're looking for, we can come alongside you with these services and do that.
To be honest with you, Mark, do you guys have the resources to do that?
Yeah, we do, Jason, we have sixty some employees in this area, um, Chris, I mean, you know, she just mentioned, you know, she whispered there when we were talking about claims, she's like, you know, if we, if we could just find out about it, that you're having problems, we'd be loved to help you, we just don't know about it, you know, so.
So I'm gonna press in again, just a little bit more, because I, I want this to be true, what evidence can you provide that you know how to do this, like, where do you do this, how, what should we expect it to look like?
Uh, we do it day in, day out for a lot of our customers, we got six school districts that we insure currently, we do it for them, we do it for cement contractors, we do it for house builders, we do it for every business out there, workers' comps, a day in, day out thing, we're experts at it, ask us questions about it, um, you know, we could do those meetings if you want us to, EMC can do those meetings, if you want us to line them up for you, we can help do that, um, you know, when we had the kitchen staff thing, uh, we, we noticed a couple of claims there last year, and we offered to have EMC come in and watch your staff, you know, during the day and see if they have any suggestions on what can they be doing differently to make that process smoother, have less claims, those sort of things, but to answer your question, we do it day in, day out.
What will you do to make it so that we don't receive our renewal right at, like, how will we?
So let me, let me explain that real quick to you, okay, because there was an, there was an example of that, so, one.
So I don't know what that means.
Well.
Talk to me, what, what are you saying with that?
So the renewal is dated July 1st, Jason, every, every year, it is July 1st.
Right, so that, that we pay on July 1st?
Yep, and then it's good for a year, and but I guess last year, okay, so to go back back last year, in January, EMC said, hey, our longtime underwriter, 30 years, Lynn Bork, is retiring, we've got two brand new underwriters, the underwriters are the ones that gets renewals out on time, okay, so they sent an email out way back in, December or January, that said, here's what you need to notify your schools and tell them what their renewals are gonna approximately be, so we sent those emails out to Harley and Annie and told them, this is what it's gonna be looking like for your next renewal, it's gonna be up about 14%, the reason we didn't get those renewals was not because of us in any way, honestly, it was the fact that the underwriters did not get those renewals, the guy that did it was 35 years, he had those things out like that, we had it two months ahead of time, here, we didn't get that one until, you know, second week of June, maybe, third week of June, so we met with them the week, the very next week after we got it, but we couldn't, we didn't get that renewal until right before the renewal date, which is very unusual, but it just happened to be that the underwriter retired, so.
So going forward, more likely it won't be like that then, you're assuming, or?
I would think it would not be like that, but going forward, it never was like that before, last year was the first time it happened like that.
Holmes Murphy, did you guys experience that hiccup, I mean, are you in the same, using the same underwriter that they're?
I think, I think we have a different underwriter, but, um, message is true, you know, that was, it communicated six months in advance, I think, you know, one difference is, you know, we were proactive with our underwriters and say, you know, we've got our meeting set, we gotta go to our renewal, and we did it ahead of time.
And how far in advance do you guys typically, either one of you, do your renewal meeting?
Yeah, ideally, you know, we'd like to do it three weeks in advance, the expiration of the renewal, a lot of times it happens two weeks, but we never do it afterwards.
Those premium hikes, you guys, you guys know that renewal time?
Well, in this case, in this case, the, the school program had adverse losses, so the whole, the whole program was getting increases and that was communicated out to all the, all the brokers what to expect in terms of the renewal.
So you guys know that prior to the renewal, or we just pay the same for the renewal and then you guys add on?
No, I mean.
What's that, what's all that information, all that data collected from the previous year?
We, 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 we set a renewal meeting every year and try to go out two to three weeks in advance, so you know exactly what the renewal's gonna look like.
What it's gonna cost.
What it's gonna cost, what the coverages are, if anything's changed and so forth.
And you guys are virtually the same, right?
Yeah, normally, I mean, you get that thing about a month ahead of time normally, uh, but you've got the exact renewal that it's gonna be for the next year, it shows the price increases and all that good stuff, EMC just happened to know that this was coming down the pipe, so they, well, and they wanted to get it to the schools so they could budget for it, so they told us those, that information way back in like December of 2021, what it was gonna be for the renewal date, but the reason that the policy was late was just because of the underwriter switch that they had in there, for us, we had Lynn Bork, he was our underwriter for 35 years, so he retired in January, and then new gals, they, they had two gals take his book and they just got not employed.
For the sake of conversation, um, probably a very viable, uh, suggestion to have a year where we see if changes can be made, the other way to look at it is a year with a different, um, agent and then coming back if we didn't realize the change that we did.
So, because to that note, I, we're, we're looking at getting a new superintendent, and it's not gonna be taking Annie out and put somebody back in and it's gonna be a smooth transition, because I, I just know it won't be, you get somebody new in here, there's always pieces of how those, how Harley and this new superintendent are gonna work together, that's gotta get ironed out, and the last thing we need to do is have extra work and like a trial basis to have to wade through during the extra work of implementing a new superintendent, so I just.
That is gonna be an additional pressure. And again, what, I mean, what do you want Harley to be focused on?
I think if you're here, you know, based upon the fact that they know what they specifically need to do and based upon the fact that we're a different, we're at a different school, different people want different things, I guess I, I, I'd almost feel, you know, as a school, that we owe them that, that opportunity to bring this to the table again, you know, and, and you can, you can say it's a business decision, it's still business, it's, you know, rates aren't changing, um, enough to the, to the point where you're gonna have that, you're, if you're looking at business as business, you're looking at donations to the school as far as that goes too, I mean, you know, you, you've got that, that, I don't know, you could, you're gonna, I just feel like.
I don't think donations to the school should be a part.
I feel like it's positive, I, I, I just got out like that, I don't wanna not give somebody a fair shake when, when they feel like they've been blindsided, I don't, I don't like that to be the situation, I'm, we're getting everything all, I, I feel like I'm in the dark until now, based upon what, what things are going on at the board, so we're gonna try to make an informed decision, I don't wanna throw one out and, and come in with, like I said, formal disrespect to, to people that are, are revenue people too, you know, that are, that are trying to make a living, so.
I'd ask you to listen carefully to the recommendation, although not my recommendation, the thoughts that Harley has provided tonight, and I would ask you to make her work in the district your top priority.
Do we, uh, do we need to move on this night, or?
Do we, uh, do we need to move on tonight, or?
I don't think it helps the conversation to a great extent. Do you need to, do you have to? No, I don't think you need to.
I just saw where it was asked discussing versus making a selection. So you're looking for a selection tonight? What was that, Jason, I didn't really, I was just asking if, if, if this was a decision we need to be making tonight. I was just reading out here the minutes, or in the, in the agenda that the board will be asked to do it to, the board will be asked to discuss the presentation and make a selection, so the...
You want that tonight?
The, if there's gonna be a decision made, we're gonna make it tonight. Oh, we go, uh, Neighbor Insurance for the twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We'll have a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved a second to go to Neighbor Insurance for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is gonna be change order fifteen.
It's linked, I don't think it requires a lot of discussion unless they're questioning.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good time, fix it.
Do I have a motion to approve change order fifteen?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
It's been moved a second to change, to approve change order fifteen. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll post a sign. Twenty-eight E agreement now.
Also very self-explanatory, this is just to secure an opportunity for training for drivers.
Last motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-eight E agreement to share bus ELDT training services.
I'll second. It's been moved a second to approve twenty-eight E agreement to share bus ELDT training services. Any additional conversation on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
All post same sign. All right, big move.
I asked Bob to be present and brief.
I know, 'cause the game starts in a little bit, so I mean...
Well...
Basically, um, you know, I felt the need, once we got the transit van, we got a lot of feedback from people that just loved it, and then the need for another one. So I went to Danny and said, can I look? And she said, yes, so I did, got to the same place that we were, a twenty-twenty Chevy Express van with sixty thousand miles on it. Uh, looks like it put brand-new tires, brand-new brakes on it, the panics have been over. Engine's clean, uh, gosh, this thing's really nice. And with sixty thousand miles, we bought that transit van for like four thousand dollars less than what this price is, and, uh, it had a hundred thousand miles on it, so, but, right then and there, and how clean this is and how nice this is, I'm like, I just ran to her and said, can we do it, can we do it? And, uh, that's where we're sitting here today, is if you guys...
This is four thousand dollars less than the one man.
Four thousand dollars more than the transit, and I feel it's much more of a van. Way less miles, brand-new tires, brakes on it, that we can tell.
I mean, this is eleven passenger?
Yeah, a twelve, it's a twelve.
Pass a year, twice a year.
A lot of times people say eleven, 'cause that's when you put it in, you, you have a driver plus eleven, I guess, is the way that...
Is the other one a twelve too?
Yeah, because we have to buy twelve-passenger vans used. Otherwise, if you buy a brand new, yeah, remember we went through that, if you can get it, you have to go with ten if you buy new, and I hate it, 'cause I wanna put as many people as we can. And we never can go fifteen, 'cause that bypasses your passenger endorsement for a bus, stuff like that. So, twelve's the best you can get.
What hit be approved for the new one?
The previous?
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-something.
And, and I, well, I checked on that before I looked for this, so that they can't even find the order anymore. And when I went in before, they found it saying it was still there, they were gonna make it. Now they can't find the order, so we're assuming that, uh, we got cut.
So what's our commitment to that? We're not in, we're not in the pool, now do you even receive a new one?
No, correct.
So are we, we're not committed to pay for anything that, that all said, okay, we got that van. Are we committed? Are we like, oh crap?
Give us a good trade.
You bear fight, you bear fight that, you spoke with them.
Yeah, and I mean, they just could not find anything, and he just goes, it's not there, that, I mean, you're not the one who books anymore. They're gone. In which I think you had said one time that that's been happening. And they don't tell you, they're just not on the books anymore.
They cancel your, your order. And at the price we agree to.
Black can't get a new one.
Oh, because the price has gone up quite a bit since. So they didn't wanna hold, hold to it anymore.
And you can't get them, but, I mean, we...
This fits your whole budget for reasons I wrote at the agenda. I'm not concerned about this expenditure.
I think it looks really good too, I just was just curious on your search, do you, 'cause I was down that billion pound that the other day, and I seen a couple sitting back there, does that, would your search included that?
I've even, I've talked with Castle Motors and stuff too, they bring a lot of stuff in.
So you would've seen those, probably? You would've seen those that were down there, billion?
Yeah, I just, I drive around looking, and it's just a lot of things look, and I find that they're cargo, when you finally go up there and find out they're cargo, they, they all look the same. You just gotta kinda look in there, or if they put cargo van or passenger van on there.
Well, those did have like the windows on, 'cause there's like four of them down there, I thought. I, I didn't look at them that close.
And they could be fifteens also, 'cause we've been tricked into that too when I'm looking, 'cause I, I found, I found some pretty cheap stuff, we had to go to St. Louis for it, and I just was not...
And you can't get fifteen passengers, because that changes your numbers and...
Right.
License, what kind of license?
Yeah, if you go, I mean, you just apply out, can't have a fifteen-passenger van and use it for sale. You can't have it. I mean, the, the inspector will come in and just shut it down, and he won't let you use it. Just for that, I'm sure for that reason, because somebody that doesn't have a passenger endorsement will put fifteen kids in and take off. And if something happens, we've got a huge problem.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a van.
I'll second.
Put that in your notes back there, anyways.
I'll second.
You guys been here trying to trend money, and I come in and start asking for a bunch of money, so it's like...
You're gonna say that to, to approve the purchase of a van of a twenty-twenty Chevy Express van, sixty thousand miles per thirty-seven, nine, nine, five, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Representative Lynn County Councilor.
We do get this request annually, um, previous few years, the board has not pointed, which is certainly a priority to do so. Or not do so, just need to take action. Uh, I believe in the past, when you have not pointed, it has died for lack of motion.
I think we always had Yanis as part of it, I believe.
I think he did a couple times after you.
Yeah, and then after Yanis, yeah, we had really filled that spot.
Does anybody have the interest tonight? I'm looking at you, how about you in there? I want you to mind, I, I don't.
I don't have it.
Um, is it appropriate for us to have our presentation, should we have our presentation yet?
I think that Yan having attended in the past would tell you that it's interesting, and that anytime you can have a voice at the table. They, they set, they look at the, um, the county council's budget. Yes, and budgets, salaries, that sort of thing, but I haven't had a chance.
Keel, do you have your interest in that?
Was that something he, he was interested in himself, and so therefore had to pick one of himself to do it? Is that kinda how that played out?
I think he was interested, and it fit into his work schedule.
Plus he was being agreeing with Lynn County Sheriff's Office, you know, he kinda was with that, or seeing that group probably a lot anyway. I think a lot of people have a part of it, I'm sure.
I can be a representative, just so we have one, but I can't be a, to, to, to all the things.
I was just gonna follow up, there's actually one in two days that we're...
Yeah, I saw it too. It's by anyone who needs it.
Motion to...
I'll make a motion to go.
Are you, are you saying you are going to or not?
It doesn't matter, I can, I'm saying, if we think we need a representative, I will.
Well, like, apparently Danny said it's probably more interesting than, that you got an opportunity to have a voice, that it's approving salaries and budgets that are already printed plates, right?
I do not.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering.
Are you interested in it?
Not really.
I said that you love it.
I'm just saying I'll do it if you think I can represent, that's what you gotta do, you say, you can represent, you know.
As you are getting ready then to wrap up, I would like you to consider still joining the presentation or fifteen minutes late, and I've been closing my computer abruptly, it means nothing, I just thought I needed to be out there.
Okay, can we, uh, do a motion to confirm the date and time of this meeting? For six P.M., February twenty?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess you're just gonna confirm that, right?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm second, then, or move a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.